You want to go ahead and mention the next special? Well, I'll let me do that and then we'll mention the date on it. Next up, we got the special event application. Did I close after?
I did not get the vote on the previous one.
We got a motion in second. Any more discussion on the touch of truck? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Did I get a motion second and carry through on adding?
You did.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Let me make my notes here so I won't get out of line. Okay. Next, we have approved minutes of the mayor and board of aldermen for the January 21st, 2025 regular. We have January 23rd, 2025 recess meeting. And then we have the January 28th, 2025 work session. I'll take a motion and second discussion. Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have approved docket of claims number 020425. Motion is second for approval and discussion. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have under unfinished business, basketball courts, alderman Caffrey.
I want to table this until we get the numbers back on the pickleball and tennis courts to see what funds we have left.
What we got left? Okay. All right, so.
We'll just bring it back up once we get those numbers.
All right. All right, we'll remove this from agenda item until we get those figures back and you'll put it back on once we get there. Okay. All right, next under new business, we have a special event application. And this is for the city of Long Beach Chamber Commerce C-Santa Celebration.
Motion?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a special event app, the city of Long Beach for a night out against crime. Got a motion and second, any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have another, on number three item, new business, we have special event application, Long Beach Chamber Touch a Truck. Motion is second for approval and discussion. Got a motion and second, any discussion?
I would like to say something about all three of them, just to mention the dates real fast. I think it's important, the C-Santa Celebration is December the 6th. If everybody would come down to Town Green. Courtney, am I correct? I am. All right, the Long Beach Police Night Out is on a Saturday, October the 25th, at the Town Green, 5 to 7. And then Touch a Truck is on March 15th, from 10 to 1. And those are all great events and thank you for bringing them to our city.
You want to go ahead and mention the next special? Well, let me do that and then we'll mention the date on it. Next up, we got the special event application. Did I close after?
I don't think you did.
I did not get the vote on the previous one. We got a motion and second. Any more discussion on the Touch a Truck? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next is the special event application, gazebo, gazette, Long Beach Political Debate. Angie, what's the date on that?
That's March 1st, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Senior Citizen Center.
Okay. So, again, a motion and second for discussion and approval.
Mayor, if y'all have any questions, please feel free.
Can we ask questions when we get there?
Absolutely. As long as you're not running for office, Mayor.
I say some of us are not going to be there. And I think it might be appropriate if we make sure that those who are running in positions that we hail really know truly what's actually going on here.
Absolutely. As I'd mentioned to you before, Mayor, that it's more important to know exactly your job duties and the things that you do up here on the board rather than making assumptions that have been made about the city official position job.
Yeah, we understand. Y'all got any more questions, thoughts? Hunter, appreciate it. We appreciate you doing this. It's an opportune time for the voting citizens to get out and be involved in the process. And I would certainly say, I hope and pray that we get more than 12% of our citizens, voting citizens, to get out and vote this time.
Yes, sir. Mayor, just to let you know too, this whole event is free and open to the public.
Okay. All right, thank you, Hunter. All right, we got a motion and second for approval. Any more discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we got appointment, Long Beach School Board trustee, we got a motion and second for a candidate.
Motion.
For?
Tim Pierce to remain on the board.
Got a motion and second discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Now, we'll say this, Mr. Pierce is running for mayor. If he gets elected mayor, and if it's all out victory on April 1st, the first meeting in April, we will advertise again. For those who did not, the other two candidates who did not make this, we will be advertising again on April 2nd. And how long do we have to wait on that?
I think it's about 30 days.
30 days.
Our ordinance says two consecutive weeks of advertise.
All right, so we have.
After that, we go.
So, we're going to do that and then we're going to move forward with appointing a new school board member immediately. This board will continue to do its job until June the 30th of this year. So, just want to let everybody know and be aware of that. So, I got that one. We cleaned that one out. Okay. Next, we have the ardent, no, excuse me, shooter, no, ordinance adopt 2024 International Building Code. A motion and second?
Second. Question?
Just a side note, Mr. Mayor, this, for people out there building new homes on this, on this code, it does help insurance rates. That's the big thing there.
Right.
You're welcome, Mikey.
Yeah, you know, it's not just to protect the builders or the homeowners, but it reflects more down to, like Donald said, your insurance. So, there's a lot of qualifiers when we get this updated building code. All right, any more discussion, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we got appointment, Long Beach School Board trustee, we got a motion and second for a candidate.
Motion.
For?
Tim Pierce to remain on the board.
Got a motion and second discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Now, we'll say this, Mr. Pierce is running for mayor. If he gets elected mayor, and if it's all out victory on April 1st, the first meeting in April, we will advertise again. For those who did not, the other two candidates who did not make this, we will be advertising again on April 2nd. And how long do we have to wait on that?
I think it's about 30 days.
30 days.
Our ordinance says two consecutive weeks of advertise.
All right, so we have.
After that, we go.
So, we're going to do that and then we're going to move forward with appointing a new school board member immediately. This board will continue to do its job until June the 30th of this year. So, just want to let everybody know and be aware of that. So, I got that one. We cleaned that one out. Okay. Next, we have the ardent, no, excuse me, shooter, no, ordinance adopt 2024 International Building Code. A motion and second?
Second. Question?
Just a side note, Mr. Mayor, this, for people out there building new homes on this, on this code, it does help insurance rates. That's the big thing there.
Right.
You're welcome, Mikey.
Yeah, you know, it's not just to protect the builders or the homeowners, but it reflects more down to, like Donald said, your insurance. So, there's a lot of qualifiers when we get this updated building code. All right, any more discussion, all those in favor, aye? Row call, that's right, it's an ordinance. Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. You'd think after seven and a half years, I'd have that down. All right, next, we have shooter, shooting facility guidelines and regulations, a motion and second for discussion?
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor, the only matter that I would like to inject is that, once again, I don't see Jeanette and Sarah here, but I want to express my appreciation for the amount of patience that they showed while we were going through this process. It took us a while. I'm glad we're finally at the point where we can go forward with this and I do appreciate their patience.
Oh, and I concur with your statements.
And the only thing I got to say is that, you know, when they opened the business, we did not have an ordinance to take care of this. They approached us about it. This is something we've reached out to a number of cities, not just on the coast, but in other states, to be able to pull this artist together. Our fire chief or our police chief and our building official have all worked diligently to pull this together. And I want to say thank y'all for the work y'all have done. And I like the aspect of leaving yourself there where you could, you know, and our council, of course, you know, without his guidance, we would be, wouldn't know if we were within the law or not, but we're certainly within the law. But I thank y'all and you left yourself where any review is up to you to come back. So, thank y'all for that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have tree board resignations and appointment.
Resignations first?
Pardon me?
Do the resignations first?
Yeah.
Do the motions want to accept these?
Motion and.
Motion to accept the resignations?
Second.
Got a motion and second to accept the resignations. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have.
Wait.
Wait, wait, what?
We got a point.
With that, with the resignations, I do have a name.
That's what we're fixing to do. That's why I had to get that out of the way. We can't replace them until they're gone. All right, we have a motion and second for, or do we have any nominations for anybody to put on tree board?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Mrs. Ann Nylett, who has graciously agreed to occupy a place on that board at the board sees fit.
Okay.
I have, out of Ward Three, I have Robin Bush.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a comment before we do this? Would it be prudent, and I know we need board members, but would it be prudent to look at our application fee to trees, to the request to remove trees and add like a $50 fee so we can hire an arborist to review it as well? Yeah, we kind of talked about that, but.
Right, we've had that discussion because, you know.
You know, we do have laypeople on there that are willing to serve, which is great, but I'm also going, what is, you know, what are your backgrounds, other than it looks like it's dead or it looks like it's a protected tree? Do we really know if it is? You know, I think that as a board, you know, not only having these members, but looking
Become part of the tree ordinance, it would require an amendment.
Okay, so, so I'll put that on the agenda for the next one, just kind of looking at the, the fees and, and that, to, to work with the people that we appoint to the tree board.
And you know, I know you know an arborist, we can try to get around about figure what they would cost to come go look at a tree, whether it's a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars.
I mean, you're basically paying for their time to look at it, you know, so.
I agree with that.
You know, and, and it would be part of the application fee.
Train, Donald and I talked about this, and I said, you know, a train certified arborist can tell us.
Right.
You know, they could look and see if it's, if it's, you know, if it's damaging the sidewalk, or if it's damaging the house, or if the tree is dead, or if it's about to fall. They could give us, uh, an expert opinion on it, and I think that's the best thing.
And I think we have some local here, and, um, with the, um, the community here, that we would want.
There's three or four here that we, that I know off the top of my head.
But we would, we would definitely need more than one, due to the fact if, if that one there is, is hired to cut down that tree.
And Donald, Donald and I, when we had the discussion, one of the things we said, we could do it like we do with our wrecker service, put them on rotation. You know, if we got three, four, five, or six of them, certified arborists, and we got them on rotation there, and if, uh, you call and they say, well, I'm busy, I can't, you go to the next one. You know, so we could work this out to make that to it, so.
I have one.
Bernie has one.
Jana Montgomery.
Jana Montgomery, alright, you got all those names?
I do, Ann Nylett, Robin Bush, Blaine Sutton, and Jana Montgomery.
Okay, these are the four, uh, that we provided, that y'all have provided, do we have any, uh, do we have a, um, a motion and second?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And we got a motion and second to add these people to our tree board, any more discussion? Only thing I say, thank y'all for coming up with names so quickly, I appreciate that. Uh, here no discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have petty cash increase request from the library.
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion and second to increase this, uh, do we have, have any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Uh, next, we have, uh, asphalt, asphalt and drainage discussion, Alderman Brown.
Boo. We had, in front of you have, uh, the bid or the cost on the drainage improvements on, uh, we call it Middle Mitchell Road. Met with, uh, the mayor and Courtney and Mike with H two O, and this road is caving in on both sides, and it's really about two feet too narrow to begin with, so. This, uh, this amount, twenty-seven thousand, is to the, is to conduct, uh, drainage improvements. And then, I guess, on the asphalt side of it, once it's repaired, we can, you want to bring that down to, uh, twenty-twenty-three paving plan?
Yeah, we could, under, under engineering, we'll discuss the paving part of Middle Mitchell and the other roads that we're looking at.
But if you, our, our problem now is with the enclave at the, at the south end of Mitchell, we're having twice the traffic in the mornings and in the evenings, they're coming to, they're crossing Pile Road. Chief Skelly knows they're hitting Lover's Lane, and they're going to Daughery, or they're going to Beet Line Road, so we're having twice the traffic now, and I've seen to where the school buses, I almost went to the ditch, and when I say almost, somebody did go into the ditch a while back. Uh, and then, when two vehicles, you basically have to pull off the road, because it, both sides, actually, both sides of the roads are, is caving. But, uh, with, with Mike and them came out, and we, there's about, uh, five or six houses that's going to need cover, and that's what this is. And then to widen it, we can come to the west side and add maybe a foot, and I think that will help tremendously, just like we did on Pile Road.
And, and what we've done on South Mitchell.
Right.
Same thing on South Mitchell. You know, so.
But this has been going on for, uh, at least four or five years, and it's, with the amount of rainfall we've been having over the few years, it's, uh, really getting worse.
Got a motion to approve it?
I, I would like a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, we got a motion and second to move forward with this, it's, uh, the total price of, of, uh, supplies would be of, of culverts and, and boxes would be twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and sixty-eight cents, and, uh, Mike, y'all will be able to do the work at, at, through, uh, Public Works, so.
There's gonna be a few mailboxes that we gonna have to adjust with.
And we may have some cost, additional cost when we get to doing mailboxes, but there, you know, it shouldn't be that, that, that much, but yeah, so.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Is this being paid out of, uh, this is paid out of streets and drainage?
Should be, yes.
Just making sure.
Go make my insurance go down.
Alright, we have any more discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I need to roll call that, see what Donald voted. Alright, next we have, uh.
Vote coven.
Yeah. Next we, you know, alright, advertising requirements, number eleven, uh, Alderman Fravor, Fraser, do you?
I have, let's see here, I'm sorry, um, so, when, when we were working on the advertisement of the school board, uh, ad- advertisement, excuse me, we talked about redoing the, uh, the ordinance, and after looking at it, and after talking to Hunter, um, I've kind of come up with a different idea, instead of going one by one trying to find these ordinances, just changing our advertising with, with Hunter, when the city sends an advertisement out, for him to post it on social media as well, because it will hit more people. And I think if we do that with any one of our advertisements, it's, we're covering any holes in, uh.
And he has included it in his, um, bid for newspaper advertisements, so we've got that covered.
Yeah, and, and the only thing.
And I, and I've talked to him.
Right, and, and the only thing I would ask is, is there something we need to add into an ordinance about advertising that, that includes this, that any time, you know, uh, uh, four years from now, three years from now, it may be somebody else that we're giving the advertisement to, besides Hunter, uh, that somebody else may get it, but we need to make sure that they've got the same requirements.
That stays in our advertisement requirements.
We can always do more than the ordinance requires, you just can't do less, so if you amend it and put in a bunch of other, uh, media outlets that you're gonna advertise, then you are married to that going forward.
Right.
It's a very fluid environment these days.
Right.
I agree with Alderman Fraser that there's nothing wrong with an arms-length agreement that we will put this out on social media as it evolves over the coming year.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's more than just this one ordinance out there.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we got a number of ordinance that, that, that we have to advertise.
And that's why I was saying earlier, when Keeney was talking, what our ordinance says about advertisement, it, it says, uh, it has to be advertised two weeks in a row in our local newspaper.
Right. Yeah, and, and we all know that, like, like Council says, social media is what people look at.
Correct.
So we want to make sure that we.
And that just betters every.
Right.
Well, and just to let you know too, Alderman Fraser and Mayor, Mayor and Board, as I sent an email to, uh, to Ms. Donald Keeney to today earlier, that, um, I, even though I couldn't provide you guys the opportunity to see, because my printer cartridges were not working too well, I've, over two thousand views at least from the last two weeks online, when I started posting these online at the start of the year, so I can give you guys that information as much as you need all the time, so. Just let me know what, what y'all need me to do, and we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate you working with us on that, Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor.
It helps us, us and the citizens out, so. Alright, uh, Donald, do you, do we need to do anything as?
I, I, I don't think we need to, any action taken, I just wanted to make sure I came back after we talked about that school board posting.
Okay. Alright, uh, next we have, uh, MOA with MDOT for Cleveland Avenue winding, widening, uh, need a motion and second?
Second.
Discussion and approval, we have any discussion?
I would.
Let me get to where I've headed.
Maybe like for you to explain.
I'm trying to find it on here.
What we're trying, yeah.
I, I know I've got mine in here. Uh, this is the project that, that we have already agreed on, uh, our match funding.
It was a reallocation of funds from another project?
Right, yeah, we're reallocating, uh, well, this. Now, we don't want to get confused with the, the roundabout we took from Pile and Railroad over to there.
Correct.
This is, this is the widening of Cleveland Avenue itself, uh, that we had already previously approved moving forward this, and this is gonna be coming out of, is it ARPA, or is it?
No, these funds are from, um, Gulf Regional, and then the city match would come out of, um, Streets and Drainage.
Streets and Drainage, yes, okay. Alright, and this.
Not Streets and, the Roads and Bridges.
Roads, yeah, Roads, Road, our Road Fund.
And this is north of CSX.
Can't find mine in here, damn it. I know I got it. Y'all bear with me for a minute, I've got some figures written down here of the cost on this. Here, I got it right here. Alright, we looking at, uh, the federal monies will be two million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, and then our match is eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and that is coming out of our Road and Bridge Fund, uh, that we had already previous, monies had already been previously approved by the board to go ahead and move forward this, to try to alleviate some of the traffic. So, uh, the, the total is two point nine, uh, two million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and, uh, I just want to try to get that figure out there. So we're, we are working on roads. Uh, any more discussion on this? We have our first and second on this.
We do.
Alright, uh, here no more discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh. Next, we have, uh, uh, item fourteen, item thirteen was tabled earlier, item fourteen, a service agreement, Sparklight, the filtering and foul wall services at the library, uh, and motion and second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Um, with our, um, AJG, AGJ?
AGJ.
Okay, um, should we not do this at this time?
They are not covered under that contract, because they have computers funded through the state.
State-funded computer system, so then I'll.
So none of that would? Are they being evaluated, though, just, so they're not gonna be, um, looked at either?
They won't be looked at by, by AGJ at all, uh, those are state computers.
Okay.
Uh, and under their state system, this is just another layer, uh, that's being added in, it's another addition, it's an additional one hundred and seventy-seven dollars a month, with a hundred and ten thousand one-time fee for installation, uh, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
Okay.
Everybody, this is reimbursed, this is E-rate fund anyway.
Right, yeah, and it is, it is reimbursed, majority of it.
Still get reimbursed, um, eighty percent of the, of all except for the filtering, all except for the filtering cost, which was, uh, the ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, but everything else is eighty percent is reimbursed.
Perfect.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, we have, excuse me, we have, uh, item fifteen, award twenty-twenty-five newspaper publication, uh, any motion and second? Alright, this is, uh, discussion, this is, uh, we have one bid to Gazebo Gazette, uh, twelve, twelve cents per word for all legal and public notice and digital presence throughout, uh, throughout the newspaper website and social media. Uh, we got a motion and second for approval, any more discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, resolution, uh, opposing Senate Bill twenty-three eighty-one and House Bill fourteen eighty, harbor control.
Motion.
Second.
I think.
We're ratifying, we, we had this on here.
That's what we already did, so.
Yeah, and so for, real quick, unless you want to tell everybody what this is?
You're talking, go ahead.
This is basically the Senate and the House trying to pass a bill that limits what we can do in our own property at, at the harbor. Um, basically taking away the control of our harbor, uh, which the city built on their own at, in the beginning. Um, we just got done fighting with FEMA, trying to rebuild it, and now the, uh, state, uh, is trying to take away our control of it. And, uh, we're opposing this and sending it out to our delegation.
And, and any coastal delegations from, uh, Perry County, George County, Pearl River County, and everybody south of there. Now, Council, you want to elaborate on this for us?
Yeah, may I add to what Alderman Fraser said, this is a very similar bill, there are companion bills filed in the House of Representatives and the Senate that look, uh, almost identical. Um, these are very similar to bills that were filed by the Mississippi Secretary of State, Michael Watson, um, last year, refilled them this year, and the bills, as they are written, transfers power, quite frankly, from the legislature and the courts of Mississippi to the Secretary of State, and gives him the exclusive authority to manage, control, and develop municipal harbors and other tidlins that, uh, the courts of Mississippi, including our state Supreme Court, have said can be, and in particularly in Long Beach's case, is reserved to the city. And this bill would divest Long Beach of its authority and right to control and manage its own harbor, and would essentially prohibit the opportunity for gaming in this community, and infringe upon the city's ability to conduct commerce and raise tax revenue. So clearly, the city is not in favor of this, and, and I hope our citizens understand the impact it could have on our, on our city.
Okay, any more discussion? Uh, since this is a, uh.
The roll call?
Resolution, it will be a.
Well, you're just ratifying the resolution, you've already had the roll call.
Yeah, I had the roll call through, through the, through the, uh, email vote. Alright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, number seventeen is a, uh, the tidlins leased, uh, I need a motion and second?
Second.
Alright, we've been waiting on this for several months, we finally got it back in, and we have a copy in-house.
Fully executed.
And fully executed, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next, department business, uh, Mayor's Office, I got, I got good news. Uh, we've been called liars for the last, what, four years? Something that we started during my first administration, and when I say we, I'm talking about the first boards that I had the pleasure of working with. We began working with MDOT and, uh, Neil Schaefer Engineering, Steve Tweed, uh, David Seifert now. We had a kickoff meeting for everything that we've been saying for the last five years that we've been working on this. We had a kickoff meeting this morning with the contractor, MDOT, uh, CSX, and a number of other folks that's gonna be on that, involved in this. And I will say, it wasn't just that first board in administration, it's been this board, these folks up here have worked with us to make this happen. We're talking about a three and a half million dollar job, on March the third, we'll begin our construction of our new railroad crossings. They will be at, uh, at Nicholson Avenue, and at, uh, Beach Park, and at Richards. Now, they're not, I'm, I'm telling you, these are the three that's gonna be there, they're not gonna all three be closed at the same time. They'll have one of them closed, do it, and move down to the next one, and then the next one, and then they'll move back, uh, towards the west. Uh, we're gonna get Nicholson Avenue before they do anything to Cleveland, Cleveland may wait till school's out, because that's gonna be a bigger, major intersection that works there. Uh, but we will be putting out information, uh, when we get closer, uh, to, to when things will be absolutely shut down at different, uh, crossings. Uh, they're estimated today, I think, Courtney, correct me if I'm wrong, about a two-week time, uh, two weeks' work, Keeney, if you remember, two to three weeks at each crossing, so, and at these crossings, we'll be getting, as I understand it, new crossing arms.
New signage.
No, just not crossing arms where we may not have them, and new warning signals and, and, you know, new signage, uh, will be put out. And we will be, the City of Long Beach, we're the first city on the coast to get this, and it's because our effort, the first board and continue to do this board, began five years ago, and unfortunately, we had a tragic accident in Biloxi with a tour bus, and, uh, that got caught on tracks, and, uh, they have since repaired. And, uh, they have since repaired that between MDOT, CSX. So, we're very thankful that this is finally gonna happen. Uh, you know, just a prime example of how long it takes to get a project done. But for this, for the previous board, if you're listening or you happen to hear it, I wanna thank y'all for your effort and this board. Thank y'all for the effort that we've put in to make this happen. So, I'm glad to see that's coming along, uh.
Just, uh, touch on us paving railroad after that.
Right.
And then this improves the grades for truck crossing.
Right, yeah. I mean, when, this, this is gonna be a total project along Rex, uh, Railroad Street and on the south side. Where we have this crossings going to our first street, uh, it's gonna, uh, gonna take and make an approachable approach from each side uh, that will meet state, MDOT requirements. And it'll also do affect railroad street where they have to raise railroad street up to get them in to, to help with that incline and on First Street. And we will be immediately following this construction, paving railroad street. I know Barry wants to, to pave railroad. We did too. But we knew we've had this in the works and there was no use enough paving all railroad and them coming in and doing a new approach and us wasting money. Uh, so we're gonna tie these in together and it may be not, may not be at the same time these crossings come to other. We may have to wait till we get all the crossings done and come back and do our mill work to match where they're at to make it work. But it is gonna come, and I will say this, unfortunately, some of us will be out of office. We want to get to see this. But we'll get to drive on it. We won't be here in office for it, but that's, it's not for me. It's for the citizens and, and maybe we could stop these eighteen-wheelers and, you know, even our locals is pulling their boats, their large boats on trailer to get caught in up on it too. So, this has been a long time coming and I'm pleased to announce that we're finally moving forward.
So, well, just one other thing, our parade route.
Oh, yeah.
Mardi Gras Parade, we have to turn on Cleveland and come back to Jeff Davis right now. So, just stuff like that's gonna make it so much better.
A lot of stuff you don't think about that's gonna, that's gonna be a vast improvement with there. Uh, just one of the number of projects that we've got already working on, we're gonna have a, uh, a ribbon cutting or a groundbreaking shortly. We'll be making an announcement on, uh, some things that's gonna be happening down here with our gateway project that also started uh, in our first administration where we, we did our retreat, uh, before we took office. Uh, we talked about painting our front door and, you know, why, the people left, why do we have a red lights down here, traffic signals? Well, that's what we talked about too. It's finally starting to all come together. So, that's all I've got. Uh, any of y'all got any?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on, personnel. I've, I got, uh, Police Department, Recreation and Seniors. And Police Department, we got, I'll take all three of these. One, we've got, uh, Education Pay, two, and then Step Increase is ten and Rehire, one. Under Recreation, we've got a step increase of one and under Senior Citizens, we have a, a step increase of two. Uh, motion and second for approval. Uh, discussion? I would like to say one thing, uh, Bob, I know, you know, congratulations to all these people. But let Donna know that we appreciate her out there to senior citizens and, and what she's doing out there. Miss Donna Stigley, she has done a great job. Uh, she stepped right into the job when it came, uh, having been there for a long time and she's, you know, had educated herself and prepared it for, but let her know, we appreciate that. All right, any more comments? Discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, City Clerk Revenue and Expense Report for December of twenty twenty four. Motion and second for approval.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Third at Town Green LLC Tax Abatement twenty twenty four, Property Taxes. And for everybody's information, this is gonna be at the corner of Fourth Street and Jeff Davis. And it's, uh, where the new hotel is going.
No, sir.
No, it's the ice cream shop.
The ice cream shop, I'm sorry. The ice cream, I'm, I just don't know what I was thinking that for. Ice cream shop. So, uh, what, uh, Kenny, you wanna explain exactly how this happened and?
Yes, sir. So, back in April of twenty twenty four, this board, uh, approved a tax abatement for Third at Town Green. Again, that owns the property at one fourteen East Third Street. Unfortunately, the county was not able to create a new taxing district prior to the twenty twenty four tax bills going out. So, the only way to, um, make this property owner, um, be able to recognize their tax abatement is for the city to reimburse the city's portion. So, upon, uh, my rec, my request to the board is upon receiving proof of payment of their property taxes that we reimburse this entity, the city's portion, so they can enjoy their tax abatement that was approved.
And to add to that, they will go ahead, the county will go ahead and make the adjustments and do the special taxing district on that. And, and everything will be corrected last year. It's not, not, uh, anything that, you know, it's not our fault. We're not trying to hide anything. This is something that the county takes care of and unfortunately, time it got in, they didn't have the time, time to make this special district. So, this is the way that, it's not just us that's being handled. There's a number of others that have to be handled like that, so, uh. I need a motion and second for approval.
Second.
We got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an agreement with City of Long Beach Republican Executive Committee and Election Commission and City Clerk. Just need to spread this in a minute.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, discussion. This is just following the rules and regulations of elections that are set forth, uh, by law. And, uh, the committee will make sure that everything is met, the training of the, the pole workers, uh, the, the overseeing of the machines that are furnished through the city. And then we'll be making sure you got a zero count when you start off before you have your first, first vote. They'll remove everything, do the count, about, you know, everything, so. Uh, you got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fire Department, Griff, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, uh, Police Department, uh, we have a contract, uh, with, uh, Power DMS, uh, Policy Management. I need a motion and second for discussion, approval.
Second.
Yes, mo, motion second. What this does is it allows, uh, the Police Department to begin to start the process of earning state of Mississippi accreditations, which, you know, as I understand it, it's coming quick that you have to have this accreditation to apply for grants. And, uh, I will say this, we apply for a number of grants and receive quite a bit for the Police Department. And this is very critical to the continuation of us applying and receiving grants.
Yes, sir.
So, I got a motion and second for approval. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Chief, you have anything else to add to that? I'm sorry, I should've asked you when I was doing that.
No, sir, that, that's it, thank you.
Okay, uh, I, I, I have one thing that I wanted to do and I, I know I've done it to, to, told Chief Seal this. Our Police Department is doing an outstanding job. We had a burglar, uh, last week. Uh, couple of trucks broken into a home and, and several other things that all occurred in a one-day period where the next morning, our Police Department made an arrest. They worked all that night and processed everything and went through everything and made it arrest. And this is not the first time this has occurred there, continually working and doing this kind of police work, and we appreciate it. That your, let your folks, let your men and women at the Police Department know that we appreciate what they're doing.
Thank you.
All right, so, we got approval on that one. So, next, we have, uh.
Engineering.
Engineering. Hold on, returning guy. All right, uh, under engineering, A, we have, uh, Payment Markings Jeff Davis Avenue. And what this is, when we looked at where we going back, we're going back to the original striping that was done uh, when Jeff Davis was redone after Herc and Katrina with, uh, JLB. And we went and got their, their original specs on, on what the striping was. We're going back with the exact same thing it was. And while we, we walked from one end to Jeff Davis, the other with the, the contractor to make sure we were covering everything and seeing where we got bricks loose on crosswalks and stuff so we'd get those repaired. But we got to looking at the east-west approaches on the, on the east and the west side of Jeff Davis. So, I asked David if he could pull together, uh, some figures if we wanted to stripe, to look at restriping those. This is just for your benefit and your consideration, uh, you know, I wanted to make sure that you, you had these available to you, consider. Uh, you could, you know, if you wanting to do any of these, or one of them, or none of them, it's all up to you as a board. Uh, but we're looking at a, uh, a contract, uh, about, what, forty one thousand dollars?
For, roughly forty two thousand for the Jeff Davis work and then.
Another seventy or sixty-five.
Seventy or so if we wanted to do the additional roads, which I, just if, if you wanna go that way, we need to make sure we understand whether that's gonna meet purchasing laws.
And I'm, I'm gonna say this, I don't want us to make a vote on it tonight. I would invite y'all to drive and look at those.
Okay, I was gonna.
Unless y'all have already done it and y'all have talked about it already or, or, you know, you know, have, I say talked, have thought about it already. Uh, you know, but I would recommend, you know, if you haven't had the opportunity, look at them, see it. Maybe something you wanna do, it may be, not, not be. So, this is just pretty much an FYI.
Can we table that till next?
Well, yeah, yeah, we'll bring it back. It's FYI for y'all to come back next time.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have, uh, Payment Markings Pineville Road, Espy to, uh, Beetline. We had two bids on this. Uh, one bid was ninety eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and the other one was thirty eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. And David, uh, I wanna make sure we have that, the new, uh, marking system we're using.
Yes, sir, they'll be using thermoplastic.
Thermoplastic on both, with both these bid, thermoplastic.
That's right, the, the MDOT standards.
And, you know, we, uh, our in, engineering had not used the low bidder. And I will say this, that they did go out and call and check all the references given to them and got good reports and have confidence that they're gonna do the job and do it right.
We even finished, we, we even visited one of their job sites and saw their finished product and, and it, it appeared appropriate to us. It looked appropriate.
Right, so, uh, I would like to entertain a motion and second, uh, that we move forward with approving this.
Second, discussion.
Discussion.
Just to let everybody know, this is a section of the road that we just, uh, asphalted and widened two feet because of the traffic. It goes from Beetline Road to Espy Avenue. So, it is in definite need of striping, so just let the public know.
And, and also, there's what, what is it, a thirty-day cure on pavement before? So, you have to, you know, we, we get to thirty days and while we doing that thirty days, we're trying to line up contractors, uh, to get a bid in. And then you got a bid process that takes us a little longer. Uh, we're gonna do some discussion later on here that maybe we can get ahead of that for the next time we pour. So, or, or, or do pavement rather. So, uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, we have the, uh, twenty twenty-three Paving Plan Budget and Status. Uh, this is again, uh, a summary of what we have done. This is, goes back to, uh, I think, was it twenty twenty-three, David?
It does. Yes, sir, we ran into, to contract problems. We had to rebid it and just a number of issues, but we've, we've spent about a million dollars to date.
Yeah, out of almost one point five million dollars, we've still got nine hundred and seventy eight thousand, yeah, and a half, uh, left. Now, he has, he has given us, uh, he has given us, uh, some recommendations, two streets for recommendation would be Pineville Road, which would be the striping that we're gonna do, uh, from, that we just approved on, uh, the previous one.
Right, that's included in that, not, that nearly million dollars. I just sort of assumed that we were gonna move forward with that, so we included that in the, in the nearly million dollars.
Okay, uh, so, what, what we're doing and, and, you know, Mikey and I have been talking and we've talked, and I've reached out some of the board members. And what we're, uh, what we're talking about doing is we, you know, we just talked about ago about Middle Mitchell and the widening by putting the culverts in. I would like for they add Middle Mitchell in there for paving. I wanna put, uh, uh, Lover's Lane, we need to look at it, get a cost on it, and La Rosa from, from Five Points to Klondike. All three of those are very heavily traveled. You might not think about it, but they are very heavily traveled roads. I know, I've talked, you know, Chief Seal can, can, can verify that, uh, that, you know, we get a lot of, a lot of calls for, how can we slow them down? And of course, repaving them's gonna make them speed up. But, you know, we're, his police officer out there all the time setting up, trying to slow people down on all three of these roads. Now, you know, there's probably one or two other roads that we're gonna do. I know it's in the plans right now that we're gonna go to North Island View and we've got a short section there, uh, that we're gonna, we're gonna pave over there. Uh, you know, and then we've got, as we spoke earlier, we got additional funding that we're gonna do railroad street and we're gonna continue to look at these streets. I know there's, uh, some sections on Gates Avenue, uh, that, that's another one of those cut-throughs. You know, uh, I think we need to, to, to look at that, you know, I mean, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars that, what we've already talked about on Gates. Uh, you know, Allen Road to Old Pass Road. And then we've got, you know, four hundred and forty-five thousand on, uh, Pineville to Beetline, on Beetline to Royal Drive. Now, we've looked at that and I think that we could cut that down to maybe from Clower to Royal because we got that one little dip area there that was from the Price Brothers and we knew and anticipated, what, three years ago? Uh, four years ago that we were, this was gonna develop. And, uh, it has, and, uh, maybe we could do some milling through there and do that and look at that. But I asked you, David, uh, if, if it's the will of the board at, at, at the next board meeting, you come back with some cost estimates on all this for us to look at. And if there's any other.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Yes.
So, under our heading, I just wanna make sure I'm following, cause, I mean, I, I get what the numbers are, but this is just money left over from twenty twenty-three, correct?
Correct.
And we haven't even touched the, the, close to a million dollars that we have for twenty twenty-four. And then for people out there that don't know, we get a check in January and we get a check in July from sales tax, internet sales tax money. That's for, uh, paving and it has to be used for streets, uh, roads and bridges. So, so we're just finishing up twenty twenty-three money. That's, that's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you.
And the reason the twenty twenty-three, as David said earlier.
Because of the contractor, right?
Contractor.
Correct.
I mean, we can't do anything about that.
Perfect. So, you will table this and let him come back with the list?
Y'all wanna approve this and then have him come back with these two years?
Yeah, I, I think we could, if y'all wanna approve, approve it, we could go ahead and approve it and start working. I mean, we can go ahead and start doing the ditch work. We've got that approved. Oh, I mean, we've got, we've got.
We can't really approve it if we go eliminate most of Pineville Road.
Yeah, no, I, I would table it, I mean.
All right, well, let's bring this up till, at the next meeting.
Already awarded that they're supposed to start the Pineville and North Island View.
Right.
That gives us some time to come back and.
Right.
Well, I guess the only thing I would caution is, do we have to pay a, uh, a mobilization fee each time?
The, there, there is no separate mobilization. They kinda cover that with a tiered pricing schedule.
Understand.
And we always try to push, we, we always set up our jobs to get into the, the best pricing tier we can to avoid paying crazy.
No, and that makes sense. I just would hate for us to do a, a, a small road and then say, okay, well, we'll talk to you in three months and then have to pay another fifteen thousand dollars.
There's no advantage to doing multiple roads at one time based on the pricing structure.
Understand, thank you.
But I would like, just before we start, I'd like to have a full list and go ahead at the next board meeting and approve and get some POs issued because y'all know it takes from three to six months for them to get to us.
Sure. No, you're, you're exactly right. That's why I was asking about approving tonight.
Approve this. Okay.
Thank you.
We just tabled it.
We're gonna, we're gonna table, got a motion to table and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Message, motion carries. Next, we have, uh, Drainage Concerns, two ninety-five Linwood Circle, uh.
Motion.
Got a motion, you got a second. Uh, any further discussion on this? This is one that's in your ward and.
Yes, I went through and looked at this and I know there's a little bit of price difference in between the options.
Mm-hmm.
But I think going with option number two, it's twenty-three hundred dollars more, but it's gonna give us a, the finished product's gonna be a lot better.
The finished product's is much better and you don't have.
Up a brand-new road.
Right.
And putting a concrete flume through it.
Right.
So I, my motion is to approve option two.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second, is that substitute motion, second, or original motion?
It was just...
A substitute motion? Okay, to approve option two, which is gonna be a twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars, uh, to, to, uh, put a new cur, new curb in, uh, new inlet to another box.
Correct.
Okay, uh, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here and now, and all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, Mike, Public Works, you...
We're good right now, I think.
Y'all doing, you know, all, all y'all doing a great job, I appreciate the work y'all doing. Uh, next we have Recreation, Bob?
We're good, I'll give you an update on the parks. South Forest Park is completed, uh, West Railroad Park will be completed tomorrow. Then we'll move over to War Memorial Park, we should have that finished next week, and then we'll finish up the town green with the swim set, probably in the next two weeks, we should have everything completed.
Okay.
And just sign that the bathrooms are coming along good at War Memorial Park.
Yeah.
Looking good.
Courtney, you were trying to sign me something here. David?
Did he have something to add? David, did you have anything to add?
I'm sorry, I, I was thinking about Linwood, with what the action y'all just took. But I, I did want to offer on Edmund Drive, just a quick update. Uh, I know that project is, is taking some time, we've run into some additional items of work that were required. They are supposed to be mobilizing their paving crews onsite tomorrow to really begin. That's gonna look more like milling at first, and, but, but paving is coming, they're, they're really close to, to being there.
I, I know you, I think we've talked about the milling that we're worried about getting close.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna watch that?
We are, they're gonna, their, their first effort really is gonna be to cut several potholes in the, in the existing road to find out how thick the asphalt is, and what we hope to find there is that our milling is not gonna cause any problems. We don't want to mill through the existing asphalt, is the main thing. So we're gonna be keeping an eye on that, and that's supposed to start tomorrow.
Maintain that structural...
Absolutely.
Integrity of that, okay.
Mayor, going back to, to Recreation, Bob, uh, I haven't been by War Memorial, what, you said you were gonna move on to it in a later phase. Wh- where do we stand with the fencing on that, is that...
We're not gonna be doing the fencing until we've completed everything else with the shade structure, bathroom facilities.
Okay, makes sense.
Because we don't want to make any, you know, we don't want to have to move the fence around. So that'll be our last, um, our last thing that we do.
All right, makes sense.
All right, I want to come back to David, uh, sidewalks, our sidewalks, can you update us on sidewalks on Pineville Road?
Yes, yes, sir, I do. Um, so I, I, I had thought, and we have been working hard on getting the right-of-way acquisition begun on Phase Two and Three. Phase Two is from Royal to, or nearly Royal, down to Five Points, and, and that's going on. The M dot required us to do a cultural resources survey on that, because we had so many property acquisitions required. That cultural resources survey has been completed, we expect M dot to release environmental approval for that project, which will really be when the right-of-way process kicks off heavily at that time. We expect that'll come very soon, um, on that. And so the right-of-way process will kick off, I, I think the city's got a, a right-of-way consultant under contract to do that, so they'll, they'll begin going, I believe surveys are, are ready. And then on Phase Three, which is from Five Points to down near Walgreens, basically to Railroad Street, that is a little bit farther along, we've got the right-of-way consultant, we're not waiting on any environmental approval from M dot, and that's moving, but the M dot right-of-way professional, or, or, or that employee that handles right-of-way has recently changed, and so we're kind of having to bring them back up to speed with where we're at on each of those phases, and that's something that's been ongoing for us in the last couple days.
The, the, this, pardon me? The second phase, David, that, that we're looking at, uh, I know, Mike, y'all have done some work on, on Pineville Road there, just north of Five Points with some drainage on the east side. Where will the sidewalk be going from Parker McCon down to Five Points?
The sidewalk will, will pick up on the south side of the road, i- i- if you recall, near Clower.
Right.
The sidewalk is on the south, and then it crosses, we're gonna pick up on the south and continue on the south all the way to Five Points.
Which will bring it back to the west side.
That's right, so it'll stay on the south side or the, or the west side of Pineville all the way through that point. But at Five Points, because of right-of-way and existing conditions, we're gonna do a crossing there near Five Points, and we'll be on the east side of the road all the way down to Railroad.
All right, in that, that middle section, uh, two, uh, Project Two of the sidewalk, uh, is there any, uh, drainage requirements there? And the reason I'm asking, I think that, that we've got to get back out, I know they've done some drainage work there, and I want to get with you and you, and let's look at that drainage, uh, where is it draining to? Because as I went by today and I saw where we've done some work and done some cleaning, trying to get the drains improved, we even put in a new covert for a drive there on one of the homes. As you go further to the, to the north, uh, the ditches got to be cleaned out, and, you know, it's gonna be some, I don't know what's gonna require for culverts, but I want to make sure that, you know, perhaps we get this done, uh, before we do any pavement, or, or, or do any work on sidewalks through there, but it'll be on the opposite side as I see now. So, I just want to make sure that we get together and look at that drainage through there, and thank you for the update on that.
So that, that drainage that y'all have been working on, it goes on the north side of the shopping center also, correct? Because y'all was opening that ditch there.
Right.
They've got it open now. And I, I'm with the mayor, y- you've done about two or three lots that we cleaned, but the rest of them need to be cleaned, because that goes to the canal, am I correct?
Right.
So, yeah, okay. Because that was a, that was a bad area there for a little...
Very, very bad.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all. All right, uh, Building Office, Mike?
Yes, sir, I do have something. Um, I was talking to David Ball last week. We're having several people come in and want to do small subdivisions, or taking small pieces of property and dividing them and putting as much, as many buildings as they can on one small piece of property. And when it, when it goes before the planning commission, we're discovering that we need to get a report from David Ball, and David is, and, and I have been working together to get that. So he's gonna give us a letter. The problem we're having is, when it gets to the planning commission, they're great people, but they don't know what y'all want. Y'all need to communicate with them, because they're y'all, they're, they're your appointee. Y'all need to talk to them about what's coming up on their agenda, so y'all know how you want to go with this and what to expect, and tell them how y'all want it handled. Because it's, there's a communication problem between the, the two groups.
Well, I was...
Makes sense, I mean, it's just, when, when, when they get to the meeting, they just look like they don't know what to do. They don't know what direction to go, and sometimes our advisor's here, sometimes he's not. And so they're looking at, at me, and they're actually asking my clerk, what do we need to do? What should we do? And they're, all this stuff is developing in the, in the C-one areas where it's happening.
Well, Mike, is it, is it a confusion because of an ordinance? Or is it, I mean, you know, we've got them there to follow, follow the ordinances?
Correct, and, but I don't know that they know what the ordinance exactly is saying.
Well, we got to work on that.
And that's what I'm saying, y'all need to communicate with them, uh, and then I, I want to say Alderman Frazier had come in and said something about commercial property, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm just saying...
No, you're fine, I'll say it.
That has come in, and people are buying these commercial lots, and then they're trying to divide them up into little bitty pieces and put houses or condos on them.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what Mike's asking about, and I, I kind of went in there and I said, I didn't kind of, this is what I did say. Uh, I said, I am not in favor of giving up any more C-one HD property for residential. Here's what we're gonna have, the same problem that Bay St. Louis is having right now. We have bars, oh, it's too loud and I'm trying to sleep, or my baby's trying to sleep. Well, I'm sorry to the people that bought that in a downtown area, but you're in a commercial area, and, and we, as a board, need to protect what we have, because we can't... Do you remember when we tried to do an overlay district, Mr. Bernie? You know, they came in here with fire and pitchforks. The problem of it is, we are zon, we have zoned commercial property in this town, and that's what's not developed. Well, you have developers going, well, I can buy this cheap and put a condo or a townhouse development in there. Hey, what we have is what we have, there's plenty of property around here, and there's plenty of houses being built. We all talked about, oh, we need commercial development, and we're out talking to people. But when you give up all your commercial property for residential, what are you gonna have next? Where are you gonna go?
Well, I, I...
You know, that, and I'm sorry to get on my soapbox, but that, my votes from here forward will be against any residential in C-one HD.
And, and the, the, to answer your question, Mike, if they approve or disapprove when it comes to the planning development, when it comes to us, we're, this board is the final say.
Exactly. My, my thing is, it would be nice for them to know, when they're in the meeting, where y'all stand on that stuff.
I think, I think we...
Just so they, they have a little bit of what y'all want.
I could, I could call my two representatives on, my two appointees, and tell them that I'm not in favor of putting residential anymore in any of our commercial development districts.
Like I said, I just think there's a miscommunication a little bit between y'all and the planning commission, and they need to know how y'all feel and what you want, so they can say, hey, this is what my represent, this is what my Alderman wants.
They don't need to sit there hours from working on something for us to shut it down.
Right, yeah, I agree with you, Tim, a hundred percent. Now, now, look, I will say this, after Hurricane Camille in nineteen-sixty-nine, the city went through the same situation. You got people that live in residential homes on Highway Ninety that was commercial when Camille hit. Everything washed away, just like we're facing right now, we're still got vacant beachfront. Those that are vacant now that were rebuilt after Camille in sixty-nine, it ended up changing from commercial to residential. And if we talked right now, in fact, we tried in our first, my first administration, to redo those back to the original commercial, and people went berserk, that we were changing something that's been residential forever. They didn't know, they moved here after Camille and built down there, and was allowed to build in it. And I agree with Donald, if we don't protect our, our high-density commercial zoned land, we're gonna be just like we were after Camille.
So, I, I just, and I'll, I'll defer to our attorney, in the past, I was told not to attend, uh, you know, the planning commission meetings, just due to the fact that it's a non-biased opinion. But I think instead of giving our opinion on each subject, I think we just need to give each appointee, this is how I feel about development in general, and go from there. You know, now that you know how I feel about it, you listen to the facts, because we're not listening to the developer that's there or anything like that. You listen, if you find out something that is against what, you know, what our thoughts are, you know, vote how you feel, but then call me, or, or communicate. I think it needs to be two ways, and I think that's what Mike's really asking.
And, and, and Mike, I, the other thing is, I, I concur with, with the mayor and Donald, but you, you mentioned...
Okay, sorry.
You, you mentioned, the, the fact is, we don't know what's on their agenda.
Correct, but what I'm getting is, they need to contact you and say, hey, this is on our agenda, that, it would help us.
Well, I, 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 like Donald said, I think more of a generality, contact your representative and say, here's how we feel, this is what you need, the, the policy you need to follow, be, because we don't know what's on their agenda till we get here and see what was on their meeting.
Correct, and that would be great, just how do you feel about development? So they kind of have an idea that we don't want this, or hey, we, we're good with this, one or the other. Right now, they're here and they're just, you need to attend a meeting.
I, I'll take care of it.
All right, y'all got anything else? Counselor, you got?
I, I, I would add to the Building, uh, Office that I'm sure they've been advised, but need to be maybe reminded that, uh, when they start out with applications to either chain zoning, or to subdivide, or things that require variances or conditional use permits, there's a presumption that the existing code of ordinances zoning map is valid and in the best interest of the city before that they start right there. And, and that, that's something they should know beginning every meeting. And if there's an application to change any of that, there is a threshold that the applicant needs to prove a change in the nature and the character of the neighborhood and a compelling public need before they recommend some type of change and grant that. An aggrieved party of neighbors then can bring that to this board who can say, we disagree. There's not a sufficient change in nature of the character or compelling need, et cetera, et cetera, and either affirm the planning commission's recommendation or overrule it. But to, to, to ask this board its opinion is somewhat infringes on their own discretion and charge to, to do these things based on what our ordinance already says, they start out with that presumption. So the applicant has the burden of, of showing is a compelling reason to make changes, or they need to stick with the city's zoning map and ordinance as it's been adopted.
Thank you, very well said. I was gonna say the same thing, but... Mike, you have anything else?
No, sir, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Emma, you got anything from Court, hon?
We're good.
Okay, uh, Harry Harbor?
We're good.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Courtney, Community Affairs?
Yeah, I'll add something. So at the last meeting, the board approved for the mayor to sign the lease with, uh, Jim Alexander and Janet Griffin. Public Works has been on the property, clearing the property. I know some people have already seen that. We're in the works right now to see if we can use the money from the grant from the Corals House to purchase pecans, to plant on the ground, as well as get a gazebo and make a community garden. So it will stay a green space, it won't be, um, a parking lot or a building or anything like that.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, uh, Courtney, did, did you tell me something today about the Police Department, is our law, uh...
Yes, there, um, was a rating going through that Long Beach was in the top ten safest cities in Mississippi. I think it was tops of six, six, yeah, six, yeah.
In the state of Mississippi, congratulations to you and, and your personnel, that means a lot to us.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
We are also collecting our canned green beans.
Right.
Um, we're required to collect two thousand cans, um, so if anybody can drop them off to City Hall, the police station, or the fire station, um, we'll greatly appreciate that.
Yes, and this is, this is a major drive that, that, that helps supply not only our food pantry, what was it, like?
Sixteen.
It was an incredible amount of food pantries, as this supplies food to along the coast, you know? So, this is, this is very important, and I want to go ahead and say this, thank y'all that's, that has given before and asked you to get out and do it again. This is, this is, you know, there's people that's less fortunate than some of us, and, uh, so I, I think it's a great thing. All right, uh, we have no derelict properties, Counselor, you got anything for us?
I do, Mayor, I've requested we go in the executive session briefly to discuss the pending eminent domain case.
Okay, all right, you got a motion to go in, you got a second? Going in to discuss possible eminent domain, and all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Saying a motion and second to come out of executive session, got a motion and second, there was no action taken, uh, need a motion second to adjourn.
Motion.
Got a motion second, all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We're...